Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order on Monday, February 24th at 6:30 PM. Recognizing all council members are present, I'd like to ask the audience to join the council in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, Committee Correspondence to Council. Are there any committee correspondents at this time? Seeing no committee correspondents. Moving on to Agenda Item 5, Public Comment. Under the Public Comments sign-in sheet, I have four members that have signed up. First one being Stefan Normantis. Would you come on up and begin on the microphone, say your name, your address, and just speak clearly into the microphone? Thank you.
Sure. I'm Stefan Normantis. I'm 90 Jenkins Road, for anybody looking for the ward, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Saco Main Street. I'm the president of Saco Main Street and have been a board member for the last three years. I'm a 20-year resident of Saco. I own a building and a family event business over on Store Street, which is Green Tree Events. We produce conferences and trade shows such as the Governor's Conference on Tourism, and we also own the New England Made Shows, which are wholesale giftware and specialty food shows. As I run a business and have four kids, I don't waste my time on things that don't have meaningful results. I donate significant time and expertise to Saco Main Street because I know a strong downtown Main Street is truly the heart of a community. It draws a community closer with places to gather, connect, and draw people from the outside in. We've all been to towns that have a vibrant downtown and those that struggle, and we know the difference is easily felt. When I first joined Saco Main Street three years ago, the downtown felt like a rustic Mayberry with dusty walkers in the pharmacy windows and no place to linger. It felt stale. In the last three years, the transformation of Main Street has made remarkable strides. With Rob's dedication and energy at the lead, now there's summer music, inviting Adirondacks for tourists created by locals, a joyful holiday parade that lights up families, and a great community gathering place for all ages, the Saco Scoop. The downtown has made strides, but candidly, we're not there. My teens don't really have a reason to come downtown. I don't have many options to bring an important client to lunch, and I'm embarrassed by our lack of access to waterfront or public art in the downtown area. We're playing small, and we can do a lot better for our kids. If we want to run on a shoestring, we'll get shoestring results. Saco's growing. We can't depend on one person and a volunteer board to make meaningful impact. Change is difficult for all of us, but we can move forward with an attitude of abundance instead of an attitude of scarcity. We have enough, and we can make this happen. I respectfully ask for you to step up and support the opportunity we have to make the heart of our community the vibrant, welcoming place we and our kids deserve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up on the Public Comments sign-in sheet is Justin Chenette.
Good evening, Justin Chenette, 6A Lillian Avenue, speaking to you as Vice President of Saco Main Street. I've been with this wonderful organization for over five and a half years now. A transformation has occurred in our community over the last few years. It's positive momentum that I'd like to see continued. While you have come to know us for large-scale, free, family-oriented events from Pumpkin Harvest Fest to the annual car show, music in the parking lot, and the Parade of Lights, we are so much more than just an event-driven organization. It's the work that you don't see behind the scenes that really assists the city in advancing our developmental and visioning objectives. Economic revitalization is our game. Small businesses look to us for support. Small businesses look to us for promotions. Small businesses look to us to increase foot traffic. The community looks to us to create public spaces that invite individuals of all ages to spend time shopping, eating, and getting essential services in our historic downtown. The city looks to us as a vehicle for nonprofit outreach like grant acceptance and cross-departmental coordination of public initiatives. Visitors look to us as the creative vehicle for destination planning, attracting tourists and miners across our state to our neck of the woods. It helps everybody. We plan, fundraise for, and execute creative ways to make a splash with things like our Adirondack chair artwork, American flags adorning the main drag, and our free little library nestled in our new post office park. Supporting our budget request will maximize our effectiveness and ability to streamline operations, to better leverage community and sponsorship donations, to reinvest in Saco. Your support means we will have the full range of tools at our disposal to continue putting Saco on the map for all the right reasons. I personally have seen how much our staff, led by Executive Director Rob Biggs, has embodied the true spirit of our community. He has harnessed the interconnectedness of Saco to make Saco Main Street the premier outlet for community engagement. Rob doesn't just treat this as a job, but a lifestyle, putting in long hours after most people have gone home to their families on evenings and on weekends, but he can't do it alone. This budget request can ensure our staff, Board of Directors, and army of talented volunteers can better serve this council, this city, and our community. I know you have a big task ahead, crafting local budget items that are fiscally conservative but progressively compassionate with an eye towards the future. Here you have an opportunity to amplify Saco's potential with a relatively low-level investment. Most of you frequently visit our events, our office, our ice cream shop, and have volunteered yourself or your family members multiple times with our organization. You know the value. You know the quality of life of Saco has improved with our initiatives. Now let's support an organization that has fundamentally become a permanent fixture in the fabric of our society. I urge this council to approve Saco Main Street's request. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next up on the Public Comments sign-in sheet is Peg Poole.
How am I going to follow that? I want what he said. You better switch to decaf, Justin. I'm Peg Poole. My business is at 224 Main Street. I also live at 82 Hearn Road in Saco. I'm speaking, I'm reading an email that was sent by the owners of Sia Cafe, the Dunoughs, regarding their establishment of the Sia Cafe. "We would like to share the experience we had opening our second cafe in Saco. In 2017, we purchased the property at 9 Beach Street as an investment to lease out for offices. We also became residents of Saco. As new residents of Saco in 2017, we were disappointed with the amount of cafes and restaurant choices that Saco had to offer. We were a little spoiled by, sorry, we were a little spoiled by Portland. We thought a cafe would be a great addition to Saco, but after being in business for five years in South Portland, we were reluctant to jump into opening another cafe. We decided to meet Rob Biggs and ask him what he thought Saco needed. He said a cafe. Although opening a second cafe was not our first choice, we thought 9 Beach Street would be the perfect location. After several weeks of thinking it over, we decided to move forward with opening our second Sia location in Saco. Rob Biggs guided us through the stressful process where we encountered outdated zoning laws. The city of Saco worked hard on updating the laws related to zoning, food establishments, and parking. We felt fortunate to have a Main Street director like Rob, who is passionate about bettering Saco, and he worked closely with us and the city departments. It was Rob Biggs's energy that moved us forward when all the surprise zoning, abatement fees, and parking restrictions came up that gave us second thoughts about opening in Saco. He would say, 'Hold on, we can make this work.' Since opening, we have established a community cafe where everyone is welcome, where local artists exhibit artwork, and you can get a sandwich and a cup of coffee. We are thankful for the support and hard work by Rob Biggs and for his ability to bring city officials, the planning department, the small business owner, and the community together. We want you to realize Rob Biggs was instrumental to us opening in Saco. Sincerely, Jeannie and Bill Dunagan, owners of Sia Cafe, 9 Beach Street."
Next up on the Public Comments sign-in sheet is Amelia Meyer.
Hi, my name's Amelia Meyer. I do not live in Saco, but I work for the Saco Parks and Rec Department at 75 Franklin Street. I'm actually reading this on behalf of Donald Camiri, aka Dynamite Don, owner and manager of Rapid Raise at Purple Square in Saco. "Saco Main Street is an incredible asset to our community that I am proud to be part of. As a local business owner who has worked on Main Street for 50 years, I've watched our downtown grow and blossom into a vibrant community. Saco Main Street's events and annual festivals help bring people together and make our city a welcoming place, both to residents and those from afar. The diverse array of businesses on Main Street complement each other and encourage people to shop locally and get to know their neighbors. In these increasingly divisive times, it is important to have opportunities to step away from the Twitter wars and Facebook fights and be able to engage and interact on a personal level with others in your community. Investment in our downtown positively impacts our quality of life, supports local economic development, and helps ensure that Saco continues to be a great place to live, work, and visit." Donald Camiri.
Thank you. That is it for the Public Comments sign-in sheet. For anyone who arrived beyond that, does anyone else wish to speak before this council? I saw two hands go up.
My name is Alejandra Herrera, and with my husband Carlos Guzman, we have been residents of Saco for almost five years, and business owners for almost three years with Gero Cafe right here in downtown. We have only words, we have only words of gratitude towards Saco Main Street and Robert Biggs, because every time we need some kind of help, they are there for us, especially him. And we try to do the same for them. When I think of Saco Main Street, I think of Rob and vice versa. He's always the face you see in everything related to the Saco Main Street, and he loves the job he does, giving always more than his 100%. You always see him doing everything to make things happen. And because of all of the support that we have gotten through these years, we, we went straight to Rob when we had an idea of a new business, and told him about it, and he was so excited for bringing another business to downtown. So right away, he put us in contact with the owners of the location to start talking about the possibilities, and today it's a reality. So we are very grateful for that, for having trust on us. We just love the city, and we want to be part of the growth to make it better, exciting, diverse, and more appealing to residents and visitors."
Thank you very much. If you could just speak your name into the mic and your address. Thank you.
Absolutely. My name's Brett Messer. I'm a lifelong resident of Saco. I own businesses at 27 Industrial Park Road, 644 Main Street, and 899 Portland Road in Saco. I own a handful of businesses in Saco. Through the course of operating those businesses, I employ dozens of employees, contractors, subcontractors, vendors, and other local businesses. I was one of the first few cannabis caregivers statewide to cultivate commercially in a permitted building that was here in Saco, and that was in December of 2013. The reason why I come before you today is to voice some concern, raise awareness, and provide education around adult-use cannabis, the licensing process, and what's required at the municipal level. I worked very closely with our former city administrator, a few of you that are sitting here, code enforcement, past councils, mayors, to help understand the impact of cannabis businesses on municipalities. I've offered tours of my businesses, which that remains an open offer to any stakeholder in the community, one of you or any citizen of Saco who would like a tour to see how these businesses operate on a day-to-day basis, you're more than welcome, and I'll provide my contact information. I'm a little worried that because I haven't been extremely active at these meetings, having been focused on operating my businesses, that there's a little bit of misinformation, or if not misinformation, a lack of information being circulated here at City Hall. One issue that I want to address is power in the industrial park. Colleagues of mine who are interested in moving to Saco have recently been told that there's a concern that there's not enough power. Back in 2016, I provided very detailed power consumption data for my building at 644 Main Street, exactly how much power is used per square footage in these type of environments. Central Main Power, the city of Saco, the Maine Public Utilities Commission had plenty of time to work on this matter. We've gone under moratorium twice for cannabis ordinances in this city. If we haven't corrected the problem, it needs to be priority number one because it's not a cannabis issue. Cannabis businesses per square foot don't use any more power than other types of manufacturing, so it's not just a cannabis issue. Another negative point that I've heard raised for cannabis businesses is that they just don't employ enough people for how much square footage they take up in industrial parks, for example. That's an outdated opinion, and reason being is in December of 2018, the state changed the law where you could employ any number of people that you wanted to as a caregiver. Businesses that previously employed two or four people now employ 20 people or more. I'm happy to report that there are over 100 people employed in cannabis in Saco alone, and there are over 1,900 people statewide employed in cannabis. I don't know if any of you saw the article in the Press Herald today. There's over $111 million in medical cannabis sales annually in the state of Maine, 86 million which comes from caregivers. That's the third-largest industry in the state behind potatoes and lobsters, and it is larger than probably the next six industries combined. What I'm really requesting here today is that, a formal request that the city of Saco, the planning department, and the council take up the idea of zoning the city for adult-use cannabis. We have to opt in. I'm not asking you guys for retail cannabis. I understand that that's a big change, but we have a lot of cannabis businesses that are operating in Saco paying their taxes. We all just want the opportunity to convert our existing businesses to adult use. There's a lot more regulatory oversight. It's a much better program. There's a lengthy vetting process with the state of Maine to get a conditional license prior to it going to the city of Saco for approval. So I'm sure I'll work with a lot of you directly going forward, and I'm sure I'm running out of time here, so I'll wrap it up. But the next two gentlemen will give you guys some varying comments on that as well. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hi, Patrick Robinson, 74 Industrial Park Road. I just, I've been in Saco for a little over a year now. Just wanted to introduce myself, and, you know, I agree with everything that Brett stated. I really just wanted to let you guys know and reassure you as far as the businesses go and the operating of cannabis in Saco. You know, we've had a great experience in Saco operating under the medical program thus far. You know, we've had very cordial relationships with Dick Lambert and Co., David Pendleton at the fire department and the police department, all of which have come to our facility, run tests. The state of Maine has come to our facility in the instruction lab to run tests and do drills. The fire department's been there quite a bit from false alarms. So it's just, it's really been a great experience, and like Brett said, we're happy to let anyone come and have a tour of our facility as well. You know, I come from, you know, owning a marketing business for 10 years that I sold to go full-time into the cannabis business because it's exciting. I have a long history in medical cannabis. I've helped to treat epileptic children, to, you know, veterans with PTSD. So say what you want, you know, I believe in it medically, and as we transition into adult use, it's here. Like Brett said, the numbers are pretty staggering thus far. We just want to, we just want the ability to participate in the evolution of what cannabis is in this state and around the world. I mean, we've got dozens of, you know, we probably have about 20 employees, you know, W-2, they take withholdings, we've got, you know, we've got product liability insurance, we've got, you know, we've got everything a regular business would have as far as paying federal and state taxes and workman's comp. So again, the experience has been great in Saco, and we just, you know, we would like to work with you guys in what we can do moving forward and how it can benefit Saco. You know, we can look at other towns like South Portland and Portland and Scarborough that have opted in and what they're doing, and just like Brett said, have the, you know, start the conversation and move it forward a little bit so that, you know, there's quite a bit of infrastructure in Saco right now as far as comparatively around the state when it comes to facilities, the technology of the facilities. It's impressive. So really, we're just looking for a name change from medical to adult use so that we can follow the, you know, follow more stricter guidelines and, you know, and just work together and make it as beneficial as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be brief, more brief than them. I'm primarily here just to introduce myself. I've been harassing you guys with phone calls and emails. My name's Joe Albert. I think I just talked to Lynn today. Pretty much what they said, and as far as the CNP issue's going, I'm already working with them. I think as a technical solution, we will solve it. It won't be an issue. The rezoning thing doesn't seem to be an issue as well. I think I'm more concerned about the moral resistance to cannabis as a controversial subject, but I think you'll find that we'll be able to demonstrate that the current medical operators haven't really caused a negative impact at all. I think if anything, been neutral, and if not anything else, been an improvement. And I know you guys are busy with budget season. We don't want to harass you too much right now. It's going to be rough, so good luck to you guys. But when that's done, we do, we would like to formally propose an adult-use ordinance, and we do genuinely strongly believe that whether, whatever your attitude is about cannabis, the adult-use option for current and potential future operators will be an objective and significant improvement. I think it's just a fact, and I think we can show it to you, so it won't be an emotional thing. It'll just be like, here's the facts, here's the empirical evidence, let's do this. So that's it. Thank you, guys, for your time, and good luck with the budget.
Thank you. Last call for anyone that would like to speak before the council. Seeing none, we'll move on to the Approval of the Minutes Agenda Item 6. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for February 10, 2020?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Counselor Minton. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Counselor McPhail. Roll call vote, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Approve in the minutes. Moving on to Consent Agendas, that is Agenda Item 7, Consent Items. We have Item A, City Street Acceptance Request for Ocean Greens Drive Partial and Carolyn Way. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Counselor Copeland. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Counselor Minton. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote, Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
No.
Motion passes 6-1. Moving on to Agenda Item 8, that is the Action Items. We have Item A, Public Hearing for City of Saco's CDBG Grants. Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In January 2020, representatives from the Maine Department of Economic and Community Development conducted a financial and programmatic monitoring visit regarding Saco's three CDBG grants. The 2017 CDBG Workforce Development Grant Program for Shalom House, 2018 CDBG Business Assistance Grant Program for Maine Seafood Ventures, and 2018 Public Service Grant Program for Port Resources. During the visit, there were no findings or observations requiring further attention, and the Maine DECD authorized the closeout of two of the three grants. Maine Seafood Ventures and Shalom House have satisfied the requirements of the program, and the grants have been closed out. The 2018 Public Service Grant for Port Resources will remain active until the program is complete. Staff recommends approval, and I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made to open the public hearing by Counselor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Counselor Minton. Roll call vote to open the, open the public hearing. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to open the public hearing. Is there anyone before the council that would like to speak on the City of Saco's CDBG Seeing none, Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to close the public hearing and accept the closeout of the 2017 CDBG Workforce Development Grant for Shalom House and the 2018 CDBG Business Assistance Grant for Maine Seafood Ventures.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing has been made by Counselor Gunn, seconded by Counselor Minton. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Moving on to Item B, Public Hearing for Chapter 15 Fund Balance. Counselor Archer?
My PDF just closed. Hold on one second. On November 12, 2019, the Finance Director presented a recommendation to City Council to increase the maximum unassigned fund balance for the city charter to 16.67% of the following year's budget or two months expenditures. This higher unassigned fund balance will enhance the city's ability to make appropriations in times of emergencies and to offset tax increases during economic slowdowns. Other minor corrections have been made to Chapter 15. This chapter now contains a comprehensive list of all funds prescribed or implied by city ordinance. I move to open the public hearing. Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Archer to open the public hearing, seconded by Counselor Any discussion? Seeing none. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to open the public hearing for Chapter 15 Fund Balance. Is there anyone before the council who would like to speak on behalf of this item? Seeing none. Counselor Archer?
I move to close the public hearing, amendments to Chapter 15 Funds, and to schedule a final reading for March 2, 2020. Second.
Motion to close the public hearing's been made by Counselor Archer, seconded by Counselor Minton. Any discussion? Seeing none. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Item C, Counselor Minton?
We're getting there.
Okay.
In 2015, Saco's seal was redigitized. However, the language in the code of ordinances was not amended to reflect those changes. While the City of Saco Brand Style Guide adopted by City Council in 2019 reflected the updated seal, the code was not amended. The city's council hereby approves the first reading of the proposed amended Chapter 1 General Provisions Section 1-19 seal, and further moves to schedule a public hearing for the date of March 9, 2020. Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Minton, seconded by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion on the matter. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Moving on to Agenda Item 9, New Business. Item A, Legislative Update in Camp Ellis Erosion. I'd like to bring up State Senator Justin Chenette, State Representative Maggie O'Neal, and State Representative Donna Bailey. Thank you very much for being here tonight and presenting before the council.
Absolutely. You can't get rid of me, Mr. Mayor. So I want to thank Mayor Doyle and honorable members of the Saco City Council for the invitation to address you tonight. A lot of our focus will be really local issues that pertain to the council, that we've had either involvement with or the state has had involvement with, flanked by Representative Maggie O'Neal and Representative Donna Bailey. So we'll start with Camp Ellis. We had a stakeholder roundtable meeting today. We had the city administration, Public Works, the mayor, SOS Saco Bay Coastal Waters Commission reps, Shoreline Commission rep, and our regional delegation and federal delegation reps, all in attendance to really start a dialogue and restart the dialogue regarding Camp Ellis Erosion. In particular, we invited officials from the Department of Environmental Protection. Particularly, we had the DEP individual that heads up the Portland office that we would be working with moving forward, Mary Beth. She was great, she's been great to work with. And the focus of the meeting today was really to zero in on what can the state do? What can we partner with from the city standpoint and the state's standpoint? What can our legislative delegation do in terms of not just the Section 111 project, but also just coastal erosion in general in our, in Saco, but also our surrounding communities? So we arrived at some key action items, so key bullet homework points that we all are going to sort of take back, move forward with over the next month, and circle back and move forward. So I just wanted to run through some of those items. So here we go. Number Number one was, we've identified that there is a statewide dredge meeting with the Army Corps in Augusta on March 13th that we can use to discuss an idea that came up about in the meeting today, which is really focusing on a regional sand replenishment program with the dredge sand from Scarborough, which happens to be our sand. Number two, and so we're basically planning on getting hopefully representative from our delegation, because we'll hopefully be in Augusta anyway, but also representatives from the city to really try to make the case of putting this on the desk of the Army Corps that in addition to the other glorious work that we're trying to put forward, that recognize that this is something that we can actually do right now. Number two, we're going to be setting up a regional erosion mitigation group with area town officials, which would include Old Orchard Beach, and state officials to continue these stakeholder conversations, to group resources and our abilities, because if we band together, we have a greater likelihood of success. Number three, the federal delegation officials are setting up a meeting with the Army Corps to follow up their letter that they sent last month to restart negotiations and conversations around the Section 111 project funding and approval, and I know the mayor and other counselors are involved with making sure that that happens. Number four, the Maine Geological Survey officials who were also in attendance at the meeting this morning will reach out to the state parks to coordinate awareness of the rapid erosion taking place at Ferry Beach State Park, and that's in reference to a recent December 2019 report. We will, I'll be sharing the link to counselors and the mayor once we have that from the communications office. We recorded the entire meeting, and so that'll be public, and we'll also be flagging that for the council so they can tune into that. In addition to this topic, I am co-sponsoring legislation with Representative Gramlik of Old Orchard Beach, LD 774, an act to protect Maine beaches and shoreline. It passed out of my committee on the environment and natural resources. It references the 2017 updated beach report on coastal impact regarding erosion, and so we're trying to implement basically, in layman's terms, some of the recommendations from this beach report, and hopefully put us on a path of creating a statewide grant program for beach replenishment. And I know that beach replenishment and sand replenishment keeps coming up as a barrier, as a topic for discussion citywide. And I also want to thank Councilor Copeland for all of her continued advocacy with the Shoreline Commission and our work with the delegation on this topic. We're in constant communication, along with Representative Bailey as well. Next topic, okay, I'm going to make it through. Okay, school construction. I met with the Education Commissioner, Pender Makin, around school construction dollars for our local schools. Side note, this is fun factoid, she grew up in Saco. Pender attended Fairfield, Saco Middle School, and Thornton Academy. Her mom taught at Young School, and her dad taught at Thornton Academy. So you couldn't ask for a better advocate for us leading the Department of Education. Score one. As you know, as the council knows, and the school board, the Young School is number four on the list of 74 schools statewide awaiting approval and state funding for school construction. The three above us have been approved, but she mentioned to me in this meeting that voters in those areas still have to vote to approve those projects. Now, we don't want to wish ill will on any other community, but if any one of those projects happens to fall through, which does happen from time to time, we move up on that list and we are next in line, okay? So that's just really important to point out. There is also a bill in the works to raise the debt ceiling of the current $126 million fund to hopefully focus on funding additional projects. But I'll also, I also suggested to the commissioner that we form a school construction summit, and it looks like she's going to take me up on this offer, that will come up with additional ways to fund school construction, because I think the current modality is a little outdated. It needs to get updated. For example, we could, instead of waiting years for the whole amount from the state, what about providing funds or monies to fund half of the project and the other half coming from a community? It could be one way of funding additional projects beyond just the top three that always get it every five to 10 years. So that's just one thought, but the key is we need that public discussion. We need to talk about, is the current formula working? I would say no. The commissioner agrees, and so it looks like we're going to be moving forward with a school construction summit. Again, it's in relation to the conversations that were taking place locally, and as a former member of the State Board of Education, this is right up my alley, I used to approve school construction projects. It's just a glorious event. So the timetable for Saco, let's get down to brass tacks. Assuming the three schools above us are finalized and approved by referendum at the ballot box, 2024 is likely, or the most likely, date for possible funding from the state. Obviously, we're going to continue to insist sooner, but our legislative delegation in the legislature is really removed from this process, and I think it's really important to point that out, for a reason, because you're going to have every delegation say, my school is the most important school to get money. It's horrible, you know, we're going to make that case of why ours is the worst and we need the money. And so it's not a question of political will, it's a question of there is a set formula, there is a set process. I'm going to be following up this conversation with an individual who is the director of school construction for the entire state of Maine, to understand what the city can and cannot do while we quote unquote wait. We obviously don't want to just wait around for a couple of years and wait for state funding. There might be ways for us to be able to move forward on small items, and so I want to understand what that is, and we'll pass that along to the council and to the school board when we have that. And just a fun factoid, of the 217-ish schools in the entire state of Maine, 70% are over 60 years past the life cycle, okay? So I know we, and again, we need to get a school for Young School, but there are a lot, there's 74 that are awaiting funding. We're number four on the list. So we're within striking distance, so I just say that there's hope, okay? Last item, I promise, I talk way too much. Okay, traffic, okay? The Maine Turnpike Authority, as everyone has seen in the news, has approved a $40 million line item for the Saco interchange improvements in their next four-year plan. This came about, as you know, from a joint study from the City of Saco, DOT, and the Turnpike Authority. Under this traffic planned, construction would begin in 2022 with design, planning, and permitting to happen between now and then. The design and planning will provide the public an opportunity to weigh in, and nothing happens without city signing off, so I think it's important to make note of that. Details of the proposal, which essentially include opening up the Old Ramada exit, major modifications to Exit 36, and other long-term traffic adjustments, can be found on the city's website. See, I'm plugging the city's website, Mayor, that is a great thing. And so they can just search Route 112. It should also be noted, in the design phase in particular, things might be adjusted. So the illustrations that are out there, I know we've heard some concerns about that, they might not be exact, okay? So keep that in mind when reviewing the documents, not finalized. So overall, though, this is a win for our entire area, and while no project is perfect, while this should have been done a decade ago, I do believe this is our best shot and the closest we've been to a solution to what I believe is our traffic nightmare every morning and every evening, being a frequent driver of this stretch myself. And so I really, in layman's terms, I wanted to focus on three topic areas that are really relevant to your work. We could probably spend hours on end talking about all the bills, and we can come back to you. I mean, that's the beauty of this, Mr. Mayor. So I know Representative Bailey and Representative O'Neal also have wonderful updates.
Thank you. So this is my list.
It's always great following Justin, isn't it?
Yeah. So I wanted to focus on what I remembered when we all met with the city council last year, on what you were hoping to focus on, and so hopefully get a little update on those items that were brought up at that time. So the first item that I recall there was interest in tracking was the local option sales tax. And you may or may not have noticed that what happened last year was that it passed in the House and it missed passing in the Senate by one vote. Not this senator, but he's in that body. But it was tabled, so there's, working on it again this session, there is a work session scheduled for Wednesday. And what they're really focusing on is trying to amend the bill so that they can get it passed in the Senate, because that was the hurdle last time. So it's not dead yet. They are still working on it, and hopefully we can get it passed this session. I also wanted to just update people on things that the municipal caucus, and the municipal caucus is just what it sounds like, it's legislators who have an interest in, or who come from areas that have a strong interest in municipal issues. So things like, one of the things they're working on is trying to move towards the state share of state roads within municipalities. You may or may not recall that that used to be 50/50. It went down to 80/20, so they want to try to move that back towards 50/50, much like we are working on and working towards getting revenue sharing back to 5%. As you know, we're moving in that direction, but we're still not there yet, and it's incremental. The municipal caucus is trying to see if we can get some more money in the supplemental budget to at least get it up to 4%. Don't know if we'll be successful in that regard, but we keep the pressure on to keep moving the ball towards getting revenue sharing back to the 5%, as well as the school funding at 55%, which again, we've made progress. We keep moving closer to that goal, but we're not there yet, but we keep putting pressure on to keep moving in that direction. Another thing that is helpful in terms of property taxes is I think we finally have a solution for funding the county jails. Again, we haven't voted on it yet, but there was a task force that met and has come up with some long-term solutions that I think has a chance of getting through the legislature and signed by the governor, and that certainly will help with property tax relief. And then last but not least, I can't come here without talking about my pet project, which is the Senior Property Tax Deferral Program that we tried to get through last year, it didn't work out. Last session, it did pass, but it's not funded yet, it's sitting on the appropriations table, and we are, as we speak, exploring some creative ways of funding that. So there is still a possibility that that will happen this year, if we can just put on our real creative thinking caps and get the funding going. So I am still cautiously optimistic that that may happen this year.
Thank you.
Mayor Doyle, members of council, thanks for having us. It's great to be here and connect with you all. I think Justin and Donna gave great updates, but I want to share, I'll start with one personal project. The beginning last session, and I put this bill in actually my very first term, but to try to generate resources for opioid substance use disorder, I'm really looking at creative ways that we can fund that, because we have a lot of great ideas on the table, and I hear, you know, from folks in the community, from hospitals, from jail, you know, we're really seeing resource issues everywhere in our schools. So one thing that I've been pursuing that Justin and Donna, Justin's helped me out in the tax committee with this last year as well, is looking at a small tax on pharmaceutical companies who manufacture opioids and sell them in the state, and creating a fund of money so that we can, so we can help folks access treatment and also address the problem that mayors have really been bearing the costs of this. So I was excited to have Sheriff Bill King come up, and he supported me, he's also very interested in this project based on his work. And something else that's of note locally is this past session, I sponsored two modest tax exemptions for smaller farmers. Thinking about Saco and development pressures, I was looking at small ways that we could give some relief to folks that are experiencing rise in property taxes and other pressures in a place like Saco. So those are sitting on the appropriations table right now, and we're working on getting them through. Same issue Donna's mentioning, we have a lot of really great ideas, and it's a matter of finding the resources to do it. I think also of note that I wanted to share is that, just since we're in the local forum, is that we are working to get our way up to 55% for education. That's a huge priority for us as a delegation, and we keep pushing for more, and we're getting there little by little. So it's been proposed that we get an additional 1% towards that 55. It's a chunk of money, it's 37.2 million in K-12 funding. I wanted to let you know about that. Thanks for having us.
Thank you very much for coming up and presenting that. Are there any questions for the legislative delegation? Councilor Copeland?
I don't have a question, I would just like to comment and say thank you for the work that you do and for representing us so well.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Moving on to item B, Saco Main Street presentation, I'd like to bring up Saco Main Street Executive
Technology set. Mayor and city council, thank you for giving me some time to speak tonight. I feel kind of like I was at a little bit of my own wake for a few minutes there with Rob Biggs did this and Rob Biggs that did that, but it's nice to know that you do have an effect, and sometimes you don't hear it. And as Don Cameri said when he gave us a pretty substantial check to support us, that he says, you get a lot of complaints and half of them come from me, but at the same time, I wanted you to know that we do respect what you do. I do want to just identify our board members here that are here tonight. We've got, if they stand up, Amelia Left, and Amelia is, although she said Parks and Recs, she is also a board member of Saco Main Street. We've got Brad Paul, we've got the incredible Mr. McFail, Justin, and you've heard from the other two as well, certainly. But thank you very much for their support and them coming here as well. So it's pretty simple, we work every day to make Saco a better place to live and work by enhancing the vitality of our city, focused certainly on our downtown, but the city as a whole as well. So tonight's discussion, I wanted to go through the who, what, when, and why of Saco Main Street, a four-year review, how it all works, what is the return for the city, and moving forward. There's been a lot of misinformation floating around, there's rumors that I own the Saco scoop, actually, it owns me. We'll go through that in a minute, certainly, but who we are. We are a 501(c) nonprofit that is supported by the City of Saco, by business sponsors, and individual donors and volunteers. Working with City of Saco and the Chamber of Commerce and other civic organizations like Age Friendly and other groups, we drive economic development and community engagement within Saco, and we are Saco proud. Our structure, we have 14 board members currently, we're allowed to have by our charter 21. We have a non-voting city representative, and we have, our Ward 6 counselor is also the council representative. We have four committees. The executive committee is made up by our four officers, and they plan and work with the organization of the event management of myself and our staff, our .25 FTE being Holly Gordon. We have a design committee, which is responsible for the look and feel of our downtown from a Saco Main Street perspective, such as the Adirondacks, the flags, the planters, and other things like the park and so on and so forth. We have a business vitality committee that works with our businesses downtown and helps them be better, and helps us, helps me, work with them and understand their needs, certainly. We ran, and we'll talk further about it, but our Small Business Saturday was the Saturday after Thanksgiving, is hugely successful, and we'll give you some details in a further slide. Individual event committees, we put those together for art festivals, Bark in the Park, and all the other events that come up throughout the year. And our current staffing is 1.25 FTEs, that's me and one person for 12 hours a week, Holly Gordon. And the joke is kind of that actually when they brought me in, they got a threefer. I've got my daughter watching from Farmington tonight, Ripley, and my wife is here as well, although she said that on her last birthday, she was retiring from Saco Main Street. She lies and can't say no, so she's still around from time to time. So in review, the last four years is what I wanted to take you through. We've got event growth, social media presence, television coverage, print media coverage, projects in the Saco scoop that we want to walk through. Starting off with the four major events that we had when I started, the 50th, and catch that one, the 50th Annual Sidewalk Art Festival. We've got to have this one succeed, because I don't want to be the guy that killed the 50-year art festival, but that's highly successful, it's well-attended, people love it, and it continues on. The 11th Annual Classic Car Show has grown in the last four years from 30 to 40 cars up to 160. up to 160 cars last year, and a significant attendance of participants as well as folks coming down to look at these vehicles, which again, all these events are to bring people to our downtown. The 20th Annual Pumpkin Harvest Festival has grown significantly. The first year I was here, I was, just joined the Board of Directors. I was not the executive director, and we had about 500 people and 25 pumpkins on Main Street. I know in the past, since it is 20th, there was a huge time when there had massive amount of pumpkins, but it had kind of died off. Last year, we had over 600 pumpkins and 3,500 people in our downtown, participating in things like donut eating contests and pie eating contests and a rock wall and an obstacle course for kids and so on. And then finally, the 10th Annual Holiday Festival and Light Parade. That has moved from, originally, we had Santa at City Hall. It's now at the train station. And the light parade, as most of you know, I think you were all either there or participating or watching, had more than 7,000 people downtown in 110, although our police department said we should stop at 80. We lost the last part of our list, but now we're all in at 110, and then we could grow it some because we had a fantastic participation by the police in controlling our traffic, moving parking off Main Street, which is hugely successful, and made it much safer for the kids, certainly. So then moving on to new events and new things that have started in the last four years. Music in the Parking Lot's been going three years. We've had fantastic response to that, and the attendance has grown and grown. We'll talk about that as far as numbers later. But at the same time, I grew up in a town that had music in the park every Wednesday night, and I thought that Saco could benefit from that, and it appears as though it's been appreciated and people are showing up and enjoying themselves, and it's multi-generational from little kids dancing as well as more experienced adults. Bark in the Park has been here two years, and this along with the Cabin Fever Reliever were two events that I felt were really important for us to have that would attract a different demographic than we'd been attracting with some of our other events. And so for the Cabin Fever Reliever, as some of you did attend, 60% of the people were not from Saco in Bitterford, and the average age was about 32 years old there. So it was a lot of new people. We had people come from Lewis and Auburn area. We had people from Kittery and people from Dover, New Hampshire that came to visit with their friends that had invited them here. But then, I think more than anything, it proved to the friends that Saco was kind of cool, and they had actually made a good decision to move here. One thing I did note there was a princess party. Holly Gordon in about 25 hours threw that together. It was a fantastic event. At the Rec Center, we had about 60 or 70 kids there, a bunch of parents, and Anna and Elsa from Frozen came, and they were rock stars for sure. So just a couple of photos from some of our events. That photo in the upper left-hand side is part of our street during the Pumpkin Harvest Festival recently, and as you notice, you really can't see the street anymore. So putting Saco on the map, in the last four years, we've grown from 900 followers on our Facebook to 6,000. We've added Instagram, which is starting to become as equally successful. So television, we had Chronicle up here. The first year we had our Adirondacks, they had heard about this and they wanted to come see this town that had all these chairs on Main Street. So that was a fantastic piece they did. The Saco Taco launch, NBC Channel 6 covered that one. They came down from 5:00 AM till 7:00 AM. We were on every 20 minutes. They put us out there. We did a lot of three-minute segments. We built a Saco Taco with Katie Bavoso. And that all started because two years prior to that, she had been girl on snowy street in Saco one morning, and I ran out with a cup of coffee and a stainless steel container and said, hey, here, welcome to Saco. You look like you're a little cold. And it grew from there, and she ended up coming back. ABC, Jim Keithley, who I don't know if all of you know, but those who have lived here for some time knew that he grew up on Middle Street, one door down from me, came down at his mother's insistence because she's, you got to see what this guy's doing in Saco, and he came down and did a cooking segment at the Saco Scoop, learning to how to make hot fudge sauce and ice, and whipped cream, and then proceeded to make a Saco Taco after my daughter spilled butter all over his tie, but things went well. He was happy. And then finally, Small Business Saturday. This year, ABC came down and did a morning segment as well. Many of you were there. Again, good news, we had our board members, we had representatives from the business community on air. And then finally, the unlawful waffle. About three weeks ago, we introduced this new item, but we had, again, girl on snowy street in Saco talking about the weather and the condition of the roads. We invited her into the Saco Scoop, and when she saw what it was, she wanted one. Not only that, but she took it out and put it on air their first at 5:00, you know, check-in with the weather type thing, and said, yeah, it's snowing in Saco, the roads are good, and look what we found. So from there, we've also had, we're going to have some significant, or had some significant national Main Street coverage about Saco and the Saco Scoop specifically from our National Main Street Association. They've blogged on us, they highlighted us in their magazine, and now they've invited me to go to Dallas to the national conference to talk about the Saco Scoop and what we're doing here. They found it kind of interesting. Then beyond that, obviously, we've been in the paper quite a bit and brought a lot of news about Saco on the good side. This is just some photos. They, when they, when Jim came down, he also did Cairo Cafe, and then he's since followed up with Cairo Cafe's opening on, up in Portland. And as Alejandra had alluded to, there'll be another restaurant opening in the Mill Building 4 that Carlos and Alejandra are opening. It's going to be called Pacifico. It'll be open the first part of May. Construction's underway right now and going gangbusters, and they're very excited. It's going to be a much more upscale, a sit-down with menu, a bar. You're going to feel like you walked into Miami Beach when you go there. Some projects over the last four years that we brought to Saco with Adirondacks on Main Street. It's three years old. It's been highly successful. We've had over 79 chairs on Main Street. And as much as Brad Paul, when he first told him about this idea, said we're going to lose a few, which I said probably the cost of doing business, we haven't lost one yet. And we had one with a little bit of black magic marker on it one time, but they did it in a very nice spot that we could cover up quickly. Flags on Main Street. I did this originally because I wanted people to realize, because my wife thought Main Street ended at the bridge, or at the tracks, and I'd been doing this for years, and my communication skills were obviously horrible at home. So we started our flags at the bottom of the hill and brought them all the way up Beach Street. And I did the main, actually Peter Scontress liked the idea as well by adding main every other flag because it was unique. It was not like every other town, and it was a lot of fun. The floral planters, been ongoing for years, but we really boosted it up this year with these large self-watering planters. And when I say self-watering, we know that you actually have to put water in these things, but they do water themselves during the day, and the flowers took off tremendously and looked really good, I think, this year. We had a lot of positive feedback from the citizens as well as folks within downtown. And then Post Office Park. This literally was a piece of dirt that I walked by over and over, and it was mud in the summer, it was frozen in the winter, and it seemed like we could do a little bit better than that. So with some cajoling with the post office, who owns that land, they allowed us to, unofficially but officially, allowed us to put down some bricks and some nice benches. And I wanted to just read off a couple of names that actually helped us. The York County Council of Main Association Realtors gave us $2,000 to help that kick that off, and we had sod provided by Kurt Scammon. And we had Hardscape by Gary Gobiel put down, he regraded it, and he put that brick down for us, and the brick was provided by the City of Saco Public Works. They have a brick graveyard they let us pick through to bring enough down there for that. So we got old bricks to match. Saco Bitterford Savings and Bill and Mary Johnson gave two of those benches, which were not cheap, and Brian Gorman, husband of Tori Gorman, who works here in City Hall, helped me lay all that sod out when we got it. Unfortunately, Kurt just dropped it off and left it with us. But anyways, it was good, and it's worked out really well. It's been highly successful, and people have really enjoyed it, and I'm sure you've seen them sitting there. Come on in, we're open is a piece that I came up with one day, and I just thought this is a good way to show people that Saco's open for residents and Saco's open for business. And we've got everybody on there from 90-year-old Janine Paquette to city employees, bankers, restaurateurs, and so on. And we've, going to start it up again this year. We went through quite a few. I think we had 65 that we put up the first year. We're going to put some more up again this year. So Business Vitality, this committee's pretty strong and has done a lot of good things, but what we want to really emphasize, we connect business, not just downtown businesses with each other, but we're trying to work on creating more of a community of business within Saco where they know what each other does, and if there's need, they can reach out and help, and they can come up with some good ideas. So these are just some of the businesses that A) have supported us, but also that we work with on a day-to-day basis. We're going to implement this year some business forums that we're going to try to get restaurateurs together who have issues to understand what their challenges are and how we can help, as well as other businesses that will go from there. We've worked a lot with landlords. One was mentioned when Alejandra talked about wanting to do their next restaurant, and I hooked them up with Chinburg, and we helped them with, through that process. Another example is Whimsical Me was looking for a space. She had a business idea she wanted to start, didn't know where to go. I had a landlord call me, said I've got a space, what should I do with it? And I introduced them, and two years, two days later, she had signed a lease. And now, two years later, she's still going strong. So Small Business Saturday. In two years, we actually gave away 450 $5 Saco bucks on two event days. It increased the awareness of our downtown merchants, certainly, and those $5, they were basically treated like a $5 bill as they went to Rapid Raise or Sia or Whimsical Me or the Saco Scoop or some of the other businesses in our downtown. They spread out pretty evenly throughout our downtown, a little bit of everything, and it just got things going. This year, we did have the news down. As we said, Channel 8 heard what we were doing, thought it was kind of fun, and came down and interviewed us to do that. All those Saco bucks were sponsored by what we would call non-traditional sponsors. So they were the law firms on the second floor, the accounting firms and things like that, smaller businesses that wanted to just be part of it, and they realized that a good solid downtown and a vital downtown helped them as well. So the Saco Scoop, let's talk about that one just real briefly for a minute. It was established June 2018. We didn't know what we didn't know. We thought we knew everything about ice cream because I ate it on a regular basis. This was established because our business on Main Street, the Saco Creamery, had decided to retire. They donated the equipment to us and helped us get going. The key number on this page is 32,000 people have gone through that door the first year. And this year, year-over-year growth from last year to this year, to February, what is it, the 27th or so today, we've grown 161%. So it's 61% higher than last year. Not sure exactly why that is, but I think it's just a lot of effort that we've gone through for the last year, and people are starting to repeat customer and coming back. We've served over 750 dogs in the doggy walk-up window, which has been highly successful. Storytime at the Scoop has been a big hit. We do that all winter on Saturdays at 2:00 PM. We'll talk a little bit more about that on the next slide. We've created 11 part-time jobs and one full-time job. The Saco Taco, the flight, which is what that little young gentleman on the right is holding, it's six flavors in small cones, and you can, if you can't decide, you can certainly do it that way. And then the unlawful waffle. And I just want to reiterate that the Saco Scoop is financially independent from Saco Main Street. It runs on its own, and it's its own business. It is owned by us, and we have a separate set of books. Community center, or as Main Street people call it, the third space. First space would be your house, second space is your business, and third space is where people gather. We have a pile of board games, we have a pile of kids' books, and we have people coming in and sit and read and relaxing with their families, having fun, laughing, and spending time in downtown. The group on the right is from the Saltwater Vineyard Church. They come in once a month and play games for about three or four hours. And on the upper part is the, is Mary Johnson, and as she refers to them, is the Simpson Road Gang. And they came down just the other day as well and had tea and cookies and ice cream and had a lot of fun. We have birthday parties on a regular basis, which has been a great space for parents. They don't have to clean their house before or after the party. Literacy program, which is supporting the Read to Me program, Storytime at the Scoop. We've had a lot of celebrity readers. Some of them are sitting in this room right now, and we've got photos of that. We've had an adoption party where some young gentleman, about eight years old, was adopted, and he wanted to have his party at the Saco Scoop. We've had graduation events that have been there, both from middle school and TA, and we've had lots of other personal celebrations. And for those of you who are parents, one of them was the first time a young gentleman pooped in the potty, and he got to come down and have his own ice cream. So you've all been there, I can tell you that. This is just some photos again of our events of the, we, last week, we had 26 kids show up. Emily Roy was the one, is she still here? Was one of the largest draws with a number that big or larger, although I think she salted the audience with six or seven of her own that she brought in. Lower left are some of the young scoopers that started working there. That was day one, and many of them have gone on to other jobs because of the training that they received and worked with us here and so on. There's councillor Copeland and our school police officer from Thornton Academy that came down and read as well. Some scoop fun, we have lots of princess parties. We've got a great relationship with the group that brings them in. We've done some fundraisers with them and helped them grow their business as well. And again, lots of ice cream to be had. So by the numbers, in 2019, we've had two new businesses that have come to our downtown. We've got two new eating establishments that are currently in construction. One will be behind the Scoop in the Atkinson Building. It'll be a vegan establishment, and then the other one will be the, by the owners of Cairo Cafe being Pacifico. We won a grant for $75,000 from the Sewell Foundation that we're working on some transportation needs. Originally, it was to have a bridge go under Main Street to go from the east side of the island to, or west side of the island to the east side of the island. That's changed now, and we're looking at doing a bridge that will follow the train tracks going from Bitterford to Saco's train station. Beyond that, we've had over 14,000 folks in our downtown for events and concerts. 3,500-plus volunteer hours generated, 23 new floral planters, six concerts in, at the museum with attendance topping 1,800 for the year. 105 entries in the Parade of Lights and some new housing units that have come aboard. I did not get that number unfortunately in time, but they're right across the street here in Phase 2 of the Cuts Project. So what's your return on investment? You give us $71,000 a year at this time, and we return a 3X multiplier through volunteer hours with the number that the state of Maine has us put to that of value. It's 20, I believe, $23.40. That totaled $80,000. Sponsorships that we raised from local businesses and individuals of $58,000 as well as the Sewell grant. Breakdown of revenue. So City of Saco is responsible currently for 56% of our revenue. The events and project sponsorships raise the rest with donations of 2% at this point from individuals. And then finally, future action. It's our goal this year, Stephie alluded to it as well, is develop our waterfront, water-based activities. We want to build a Saco River community. We're going to have paddle meetups with folks that are currently kayakers and stand-up paddleboarders, and then we're also going to have some try-a-boat paddleboard nights to have people that are interested in trying but maybe haven't done it yet to get them fired up about the river. We're also going to conduct a river cleanup this summer as well from the falls down towards the ocean. Public art program, we've talked with you all about this, about we need to look at murals and sculptures in our downtown. Having come from Naperville, Illinois, where they had a massive public art program that was not built overnight, they added, every year, they add one or two or three pieces. And they're everything from traditional founder statues to modern art and to murals and other sculptures. It really makes a town, and it really makes, gives the town some personality, and we need to think strongly about how we can do that. Some other minor additional enhancements, illuminate the post office park for better nighttime use. And then we'd love to see the plan or expand, program expand into hanging baskets and then further from City Hall going north. Finally, the request. So we'd like to increase this trajectory and success for Saco. We've got a fire, and we want to throw gasoline on it. We are requesting a budget amendment for $20,000 to hire a manager of events. This would include their salary, burden, health, membership, because as a Main Street organization, we have to be a member of that, and we also have to go to their conference once a year. With this additional capacity, we'll be able to increase grant submissions. grant submissions, support economic development activities, and then continuous improvement to our media presence and enhance our event management. And as I always say, Saco, it's happening. And to, in deference to my friend Emily, we're friendly by nature as well. With that, I'd like to see if you have any questions.
Thank you Executive Director Biggs for that presentation. Are there any questions from Council? Counselor Archer?
Yeah, I was quite surprised on the last slide. Initially, you had said that you were going to be requesting 30 and then 60. It's now going to be 20 and 40?
No. So 30 was a request made in December.
That's correct.
It would cover six months. We're now in February. So four months, if you average it out, would be $20,000.
Okay, so it's now, okay. No, that's what I said.
So it's a four-month, it's a four-month stipend to get this thing started versus waiting until July 1st. Any other questions?
Any other questions from the right?
Come on.
Any questions from the left? Counselor Mendor.
Rob, I know there's been some discussion about enhancing the fundraising and that kind of thing. If I understand correctly, you've got a new board member that kind of specializes in that stuff?
Yeah, so not all our board is here, certainly tonight. Some of them have other requirements they had to be at. Haley Thompson is the Director of Development for Thornton Academy and also a Saco resident. And she has joined our organization as a board member and is working with us to help, as a professional, to help develop two annual appeals that we'll be working with businesses probably on one and residents on the other.
Counselor Archer?
So a lot of people know my background was Master of Social Work and Nonprofit Management. So I've been, I've always been in this weird position. My heart says something and my brain says another. It's my academic education. I've always been very concerned that our major fundraiser has always been the city. Not fundraiser, but that funds.
Yep.
In a perfect world, I say perfect world because it doesn't always exist, 30% should be your biggest donor, that one single source. And I've always been very concerned about the fundraising side of Saco Main Street. Even when I served on the board before I was on the council, I was on and I still have those concerns today. But I would just, I just found out that you actually have an expert on board.
Well, and so also though, as a board member, yourself, since I'm not on the board, what, and you were not, obviously.
Two of us can actually have.
As a board member now, you cannot ask for money and I totally understand that. But at the same time, as a board member, before you were on City Council, you could have asked for money. And maybe you could explain to me, what is the hold or what's the block for board members being on the board from raising money?
Well, I think initially, for the first year that you're on board, you're learning the organization. So I think that creates initial hesitancy on asking for funds in that first year. And then eventually, there needs to be some kind of movement, five-year plan, strategic planning, things like that to help push it along. So again, for my first, what, seven months, I was just learning the organization. And then I got into a council position where I was prohibited from asking for money. Again, I've always been concerned about the share of that fundraising. I have done research on the other Saco Main Streets within the state of Maine pulling 990s and what the cities give. I will say, thank you to Glenys, how to find information from the City of Saco and who we give to who. It's great. Other agencies, other organizations, cities are very hard to find the information. But I will say the, where did I see it? Brunswick does give 100 grand a year. So that was the highest that I was able to find.
Brunswick also has a budget of 475,000, I believe.
They raised, again, we can only get 27 records, 2017 records due to how taxes work. They were at 232.
232, all right. Skowhegan is.
That's 50% city portion to the organizational.
City, Skowhegan is significantly less in their city contribution, but significantly higher in their budget. Typically, a Main Street organization.
Yeah, they're 250 with 40 coming from.
Per, as you said, the perfect model's a third, third, and a third. None of them are.
No, I'm noticing that.
Some are heavy civic, some are heavy grants, some live by grants, and some live off of, some are great, have great sponsors. Brunswick has incredible sponsors that give them significant amounts of money, as well as, for example, the Bank of Skowhegan gives them over $25,000 for their organization.
Very significant.
So they're all different. Anyway, that's where we're at. And any other questions?
Any questions from the left? Any further questions from the right? The motion would be to move this to a, to a budget amendment on March 3rd. Is that right? March 3rd, is that Monday? March 2nd, sorry. So that would be the, the motion. Is there a counselor that's willing to make that motion?
It's removed.
A motion's been made by Counselor Copeland. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Counselor McFail to move this to an agenda item for our first reading on March 3rd as a budget amendment. Sorry, March 2nd. Thank you, Counselor Copeland. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Counselor Archer? We're just moving it for discussion.
No, understood. Going to give you my answer.
Would you like to pass and I'll come back to you?
That'd be great.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Mendor?
Yes.
Counselor McFail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
And Counselor Archer?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to move it to March 2nd as a budget amendment for our first reading. Thank you very much. Moving on to Item C, City Council and School Budget Update. At this time, I'd like to bring up Superintendent DePatsy.
Sure.
Welcome the school board to come up and.
Come on, come on up.
At this moment, we're going to take a five-minute recess and we'll be back at 7:54, 7:55.
I just, I just thought it wasn't.
I think it's just.
Don't we have a.
You getting your reps in?
Get some more water and pay homage to our.
Yeah, we'll have that for Tom if he wants to say anything on Saturday.
Mic check, test, test.
It was all over the place on Thursday.
I was looking to talk in like 10:17 there.
I was like.
We do what we have to do.
Followed by a social afterwards and a little artsy-type theater over on the north end of town somewhere.
So you had a car, so you rented a car for a week.
Yeah, they provided. And then Saturday, they did a.
Right, right.
A whole group of bashers.
Right, right.
And then Saturday night.
But you never know. So maybe next time he comes and now there's two of them really.
Oh my God, 76 years old, he's still rocketing.
It's a small office.
Watch out.
They'll know.
They gave me that.
Was it the same?
Yeah.
The one that went to the.
Yeah, I think he needs to talk to Janet. I mean, he absolutely needs to connect with Janet. She doesn't know. Maingeologicist. That was Saturday night. Sunday, they had breakfast.
It was like you asked him.
Yeah. And he and his whole entourage came over and joined up again for breakfast.
I've mentioned it to him, but yeah, they don't.
And then we went up, left there, went over to.
Right, they're scientists.
Way up there where we got all the views and stuff.
Right, right. I mean, these guys, I didn't even realize what they're doing. They're out there making measurements.
And we went from there on the bow out to Arches National Park.
Have my dinner.
Left there Saturday morning.
Good for you. Well, welcome home.
I know the name.
Thank you, Steve. Heavy hitters.
Yeah, I mean, you know, thank you. Justin did a really good job. Yeah, yeah. I was, like it was just ended and people walk out, but you know, the fact we wrapped it up, we had next step. Yeah, it was perfect. Everything was good about it. So thank you. So I was.
school board members here are school board member Shiman, who's the vice chair, school board member Johnston, school board member Leary, and school board member Walters, as well as Superintendent DePatsy and Finance Director Jason DiDonato. So thank you all for, for coming tonight and, and giving us a budget update. Superintendent?
Great. I know our board chair is not here, but he is probably watching, I'm hoping. His son is getting him on Facebook and so forth, but he's resting great. I don't know if you know, Art had a heart attack. He, he's actually looks awesome. I visited him the other day. He's watching a lot of cop stories, but he's hoping to be back in three more board meetings and then he'll be here. So he was actually watching this very cool one, but I won't talk about it. So, all right. So we're here to give you an update on where we are in the budget. Jason has prepared kind of a very kind of simple way of going down through each of the different cost centers. He'll be reviewing that and then obviously we'll be taking any questions. This is just an update on this year's budget, correct, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. And we have board members here too, if you want to ask them any questions.
Good evening. For the month of January is where we finalized our last finance meeting. We were supposed to be 58.3% of our actual budget. We are currently at 59.85%. We are over and we will continue to run over for this fiscal year. The very first handout you should have received in your pack, it is what I hand out every month at our finance meeting. It's this snapshot of by department, so various schools, technology department, operations, central office and so forth. It explains what our budget is for that, for this fiscal year per department, as well as where we are spent year-to-date, as well as encumbrances that are still outstanding since we have not paid the invoices, but yet we've received the product. At the bottom there, they have, to the right of the columns, it has numbered one through 11. Basically, anytime any of our departments are over budget, we have a quick explanation down below. Most of these have not changed since the beginning of the school year. Essentially, when a lot of the departments go over, there's certain reasons for it. And then as the year progresses, it does paint itself out and gets back into budget. Second page is the revenue section, which same thing, where we are currently what we received versus what we've budgeted. And again, we're at currently 56.6% of anticipated revenue. The second page, which you received, was the actual forecast for all of our over-under by department. This is a little earlier than I usually hand out. I know this fiscal year is an exception to most, so we thought. So we thought it was important to get this out and start talking about certain areas of the budget that are going to be concerns. As you can see, we're currently looking approximately 1.3 million will be overspending our expenditure budget. That does include the $1.1 million in the budget reductions that was done at the budget process for last year. And then we're also looking to be approximately under revenue, forecast revenue by a little over half a million dollars. So bottom line for the end of the year, we're looking at a deficit of what, 1.9 million, which swings our fund budget from 1.1 million down to a negative 721,000. To talk about that a little bit more, the discussion was last budget cycle that we did have a surplus and that the city council would like to use most of our surplus to help reduce the tax impact for this fiscal year. So we are going to be running over our expenditure budgets that I have outlined in the following backup that I received to you. So even though we are over budget 1.3 million, 1.1 of that essentially is from the reductions from the budget cycle from this fiscal year. I believe I put this on your table earlier. Just want to go over a couple of main areas that is cause for concern. It is not in your packet, I apologize. I had put a little more detail on it today. So by, when you look at where we're going to be overspending our budget, first line on is Fairfield expense. And we kind of, I kind of listed out by each department where the main concerns were. Each line for a definition that has an asterisk next to it, that represents that 1.1 million dollar reduction. So it's an accounting aspect. There's been some confusion on why we've had to do it this way. So when the city council, when you guys decided to vote the different cost centers down, I had to reduce certain account numbers within that cost center so that when I sent it up to the state of Maine, it's approved. So basically all it is is just where I had to actually take the money. So essentially, for example, Fairfield says we're going to be over budget by about 20 grand and I starred our principal salary of $22,917. I did the same thing for Fairfield, Young, for that same dollar amount. And then for Burns and Saco Middle School, I reduced those salary lines by 45,833. That's just to get that total 137,500 in each cost center. So if you remember back, that 1.1 million that was reduced, you divided by, I believe it was seven cost centers, and it's 137,500. So just a little bit more clarification, explanation on where this is. One of the, the next department I want to talk about is Young School. I have it, I had originally projected it being over about 120, 123,000. I think that was a little aggressive. I did do a little bit more analysis on our salary lines and I think it's probably close to about 85 to 90,000 dollars over. And the main areas besides the principal salary reduction to account for the 1.1 million dollar reduction, we did have to increase a new kindergarten teacher this year that was not budgeted for. That was due to enrollment, significant high enrollment for Young School. And then the remaining variance in the Young School Department was based on the new hire salary and benefits variance budget to actual from what we actually had originally budgeted. Burns, the same thing. We had the, we reduced the principal salary lines. And then we also had, again, most of our, most of our variances when it comes to the school department, any of all of our school departments for any of our schools versus special ed is basically our people. Almost 80% of our budget is made up of people for salary and benefits. So when we hire individuals, sometimes we're hiring under what we currently had for that position. A lot of times we are trying to get the most experienced teachers, so sometimes we are paying more. It basically comes down to the best candidate. So there's some variances throughout all of our budgets. And in the past, we usually have enough variances in all areas to kind of cover those costs. But this year, due to the budget strengths we have in other areas, it's showing as more of a deficit. Let's see, what else we have?
Jason, can I ask a question? I don't mean to interrupt. So when you talk about the 1.1 million reduction and then you have these starred items, the budget reduction in principal salary of, and I'm looking at the overage at Burns School, and you've, for accountant purposes, as you stated earlier, you cut that line item $45,833. But you didn't actually cut funding to that position by that line item.
Correct.
So I have to ask the question of, why would you mark that as you're cutting that? I understand you're going to make the argument that I had to do it for accounting reasons to make the 137 in each line, in each...
Cost center.
Cost center come up. I get that, I hear what you say. But why would you, why would you do that and not take from another area? And that's just a question that the public is asking. I'm sure they're asking the school board and I'm sure they're going to ask the city council as we move forward. So I just want to get that out there and start that discussion and talk about why that happened. Because that doesn't seem, it doesn't seem like that's a good accounting.
Sure. And that's a viable question.
If you, if you're saying, hey, we cut this, but we didn't actually cut it.
Right. Well, so, and I just want to, and I believe, I thought I just explained it in December, but it's probably good to, every time we have these conversations, to go over this conversation again. I believe the intent was by the city councils, even though they're reducing the budget, we were not to cut our budget. It was to overspend our expenditure lines. We were very clear with that, just because it was a surplus area and that was fine. However, we did make strides in other areas that we could reduce to help alleviate having to use all of our 1.1 surplus. So we did make adjustments of about 400, and I apologize, I don't have the, I don't have the figures in front of me exactly, but I think it was 460 some odd thousand dollars in reductions. One of the areas that I, we can talk about is like if you look underneath technology. So we actually cut $110,000 from that, from their department to make up that 137.5. But we didn't actually implement this S. Saco Middle School phone system like we had originally planned. So we're actually going to save 58,000 out of that 110,000. However, the other, the other 52,000 is actual expenses that we may have needed to use. Luckily for us, we're looking like we're still under budget by 17. So go back to your point about the salaries for the principals' lines. So in that cost center, it's called system, school administration. And in that line, all there is is salary and benefits for all principals and secretaries in that school. There is some supply lines that make up, but there's not enough money in their supply lines to make up 137,500. So I have to take the actual dollar amount from account line. So we took it from the salary lines, it just hasn't, is an easy earmark to say, hey, these are true costs, we're not cutting our staff, because that wasn't the intent of the reduction of the 1.1. But I have to earmark that account, that account because it falls within that cost center.
So...
Is that, did I...
Thank you. Following up on that. So the projected surplus prior to council reducing the budget by 1.1 million, the surplus was coming in at about a 1.2 million dollars?
Yep.
Did you actually see a realized surplus of 1.2 million dollars?
Yeah, well, it was, it was 1.179.
1.17.
That's what we finished with, yep.
And so if, if we had a realized surplus and the council reduced it by 1.1, that should have left 1...
79,000.
79,000.
Correct.
So I guess, why would you? I'm trying to understand why there would be spending beyond that and why you wouldn't be able to cut the, cut that funding from the surplus rather than...
So it is. So, so if you look at the actual expenditures of one, so I'm projecting approximately 1.3 million dollar of a deficit. So if you subtract the 1.1, it's about 200,000 dollars of additional deficit. Now, one of the main areas that we have is our special ed department that I haven't gone to for that department, but we'll discuss that here shortly. So we did have other unanticipated expenditures. That's why having to reduce our entire surplus is a risky, risky case for this year. One of them was, again, like I said, the new hire of a teacher that due to enrollment we had to have. But skip to the special ed department, that's one of our main, that's our largest influx and why our budget is taking such a hit this year is because our Thornton Academy tuition is approximately 662,000 dollars higher than currently, currently budgeted for. I don't know if, if we, I believe we discussed this back in December, but we can talk about it again. When we originally did our budget last year for this fiscal year, we spoke with Thornton Academy with regards to where we were ending and where we were projected to end last fiscal year. Discussions that was had, we originally had 1.3 million in the budget. I was told they're running in about 1.1 million. So I was anticipating a 200,000 dollar surplus for last year. As the year ended in June, after we had finalized our budget process, we received our final closeout for the school year and lo and behold, it was a 1.53 million dollar final expenditure budget. When we asked for why there was a variance of said 400,000 dollars, we were told that it was an accounting error on their part which caused a large, not only, we did not have a 200,000 surplus, I ran into a 200,000 deficit on that one account line. So when we were building our budget for last year, we took the 1.1 million as the anticipated. And so we built our budget this year at 1.2 million. And right there, there were 600,000 in the hole, because right now they projected as of October that there'd be at 1.83 million. So that's a large issue and why our special ed budget is and why our total deficit is at 1.3 million for this year.
Thank you.
Yep. I can go down the rest of these accounts if you want, but I think the next, probably the most important piece is the revenue that you'd like to probably talk about. Where are we with our projections for main care? Couple of the other areas that we can discuss quickly is our subsidy was reduced by 32,000 dollars for this fiscal year because our original projections for pre-K was 110 and they came in at 108, so they just did a accounting transaction change since we finalized 108 for our October 1 count. Currently, right now, we have, we're anticipating approximately a half, a little over a half a million dollars in surplus for, I'm sorry, not in surplus, a half a million dollars for main care, which would receive about a half a million dollar deficit. Those numbers come in with what we've currently have received year to date. It is not reflected in the revenue piece because we didn't receive them until the end of January, beginning of February, prior to the production of these reports. We're averaging about a little over 32,000 a month for our current billable students that we have. And we've only received the payments for January and February so far, so we have not received our back payments for October or November. And not all of our students have been finalized and approved, so we are still anticipating others. But as of right now, that's our latest and greatest. I know you wanted more detail the last time we met on this. That is what I have to date and we will have more as the month goes on and the billing continues to come in.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council?
Just have a statement, I guess.
Councilor Johnston.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding here is that even with absorbing the 1.1 surplus, you're still looking at a 721,000 some odd change deficit. Is that correct?
That's correct. 200,000 dollars in expenditures and about a little over half a million revenue.
And as you've stated, that's largely because of the TA error or whatever we're calling it. And largely because of the revenue issue or not being accurate with the revenue that we were supposed to be generating.
Yeah, again, if we go back to the revenue that, on how it was set for the main, main care, we originally anticipated or projected, we were trying to be around 700, 800,000. The board elected to try to be a little more aggressive with our billing. I, I know it's not hitting our mark, but I think what the school department has done to create this type of revenue stream in less than four months, as well as the personnel, I think is very impressive. It's more than what we received in the prior year and unfortunately it isn't hitting our mark and we are going to have a deficit this year. But to be able to bring, generate that revenue as a first year program, I think it speaks wonders to our staff and how hard they've worked. I know Dom probably has a little more to talk about that, but I think it's, once we have this first year in our bell, I think we're not going to be as aggressive next year for budgeting and I think that's what's up to the board to project where they would like to see for next year.
Yeah, I mean, we're extremely proud of our staff for doing this. You have to start in September. I think I explained this process to you last time I was talking to you, but I'll repeat it again. So all these students had to have, first of all, have to be main care eligible. They have to have an IEP meeting with their parents. The parents have to sign consent for evaluation. Our staff that we hired last year as RADS had to go out and do the evaluations, which they really did on a speeding up timeline. They did the evaluations, they had another IEP meeting, they had to write a written notice, they had to write an IEP to put the BHP in the, the actual IEP. Then we had to start billing and that takes process too, so that's why it took a little bit more time, but they allowed us to back bill. So our staff and our programs, the most important thing, I know everyone wants to focus on the money, but our programs are very strong. I know some of you have been in the building. Again, I'm going to keep asking you to visit our schools so you know what is going on, just like our school board. So you can meet and talk with our principals and our directors and see firsthand, because it's a whole different story once you get in the building.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? Councilor Johnston?
I can certainly understand all of what you just said. But my challenge is that I sat here last year, I know at least one of the councilor being Councilor Archer, and I both expressed concerns about this revenue being 1 million dollars. And obviously it's falling short of that mark. And I understand all the effort that's gone forward, you know, but again, this is another example of rolling out a program and not giving council or even the school board adequate information as to what it would generate.
Well, I, well, I don't know, I don't know if that's necessarily an accurate statement. I do believe we, after the initial assessment of the revenue, we did tell the school board that we weren't confident with that number and that we actually probably projected it closer to 5 to 600,000. But, you know, they, they wanted, they wanted to make sure we were doing everything we can to initiate this program.
Going back to, I believe it was April of last year, when I brought it up at a workshop, you guys seemed fairly confident on hitting this mark. I questioned you specifically, Jason. You were like, oh yeah, we're going to have everybody trained up on it and this shouldn't be an issue. Now all of a sudden, September starts.
I mean, we, they're all recorded those and you guys can come up, but we actually had those discussion and we definitely, I definitely warned the board, that's a little too aggressive.
Thank you, Dom. I'd like to move on to Councilor Copeland, who also has a question.
If we can go back to the issue you talked about with TA and their sped funding and why, what was the error and why is it more expensive?
So there was multiple reasons for this. I mean, if you, if you haven't read the contract with TA, we can definitely provide it to you. I think we actually set it out with a FOIA request. But what they did last year is they started charging us for 504. So we have to actually have to pay for now for 504 services. On top of that, we have an eighth grade class that moved in with needy kids. So once our kids from eighth grade move into ninth grade, they can hire the staff that they want. So if they, they can, they can do the ratios for special ed, they can be low, which they can be. They can hire ed techs, whatever they need based on the IEPs and what they feel like. So those, those added in with 504 and other types of variances, that's what kind of raised that up, minus the piece that Jason was talking about.
Isn't there communication between, you know, us and TA and the IEPs and all that information going back and forth beforehand?
So majority of the reason for the, the actual fiscal error that was happened was that they didn't account for, they didn't have Saco's student population accounted for appropriately. So when the, when the calculations were being run, we didn't have as large of a percentage as we should have was one piece. The other piece is the 504, which isn't a huge dollar amount, but it was about 85,000 dollars in additional expenses that they billed for us. So you take those two, those two expenses in and when they originally forecasted a 1.1 million dollar budget, that caused us concern. It should have, it rose a red flag when we were at 1.3 million as a budget and that the expenditure went down. I did state that that's great news for us, but again, we have no control of where they're, how their programming is and what their staffing was. So I anticipated that maybe they were moving, making moves or they had a higher population from another, different school district that was helping reduce our Saco's cost. But we, we run majority of those expenses based on our student population, which I believe is 72% of their overall budget.
So we, they didn't understand our population number?
It was a calculation on there, they didn't give me full details on what it was, they just didn't, they said that they didn't have Saco's population accounted for appropriately. They didn't explain what part of that was or how the impact was.
Thank you. I'd like to move on to Councilor Menthorn, who has a question, then Councilor Archer.
I'm going to preface it more as a statement than a question at this point, but you know, I had misgivings at the end of the budget year last year when we pulled the 1.1 million dollar rug out from under you. And, you know, it was at the 11th hour, 59th minute and I wasn't happy with it, but you know, the dollars were indicated that there was wiggle room and it, we voted to do that. Looking at the current... Looking at the current summary sheet here that you gave us, I see reductions that add up to about 350,000 that you were able to take advantage of, or whatever. I've spoken with several superintendents around the state, and all of them said, if, you know, you get a quarter million out of main care, you're doing good. And we budgeted 1 million. Now, we acknowledge after the fact now that, yeah, that was a very exuberant number to go for a million for main care funding. My concern is, at the end of the day, as we enter the budget process, we've got 88 new hires mainly supporting pre-K and the sped programs and everything, that people are going to see as new hires. We've got a 1.1 reduction that we've managed to carve 357, if my math was correct, out, but we overs, we still spent the other 650, 700 that way. We're showing, we're going to come in about 700 over, which is basically the overage of totally mis-guessing whatever the main care revenue. We're all going to get beat up for this, and the continual finger-point of whether council cut this, or that, or you guys misfigured, or whatever, we got to get past the finger-pointing and get to something that the public can perceive, that we know what the hell we're doing. And the continual perception, year after year, and I've been sitting here for four year now, is, oh, well, the city's got the money right to check, and that's got to end. I mean, we just raised our ceiling, and we're in the process of raising it tonight to a 16.67. The main reason being is we want to have the city in the best bonding position by having that un-reserve account as high as it can be, which gives us a much better bond rating, so when we have to match whatever the state provides for this school construction, we get the best 30-year bond rate for our residents on building that school. And if we're continually having to hit the reserve account for these missed calculations, everybody loses. And the residents that continue to have little confidence in us as a council, you as a board, and us as a city, in being able to administer our services. And somewhere, we've got to find solutions to this and fix this, because the public is not happy, and I think we all know it. Thank you.
Counselor Johnston, did you want to follow up on anything? I know I had moved on to the next counselor, so I just.
No, no, you moved on, and Counselor Menthorn just pretty much summarized everything at where I was going with this.
Thank you, thank you. Any further comments?
I think Steve would like to say something, but I, I would also just like to follow up with this current budget cycle. I think it's very important for this, this year that we kind of have everybody's cards on the table of what we would like to see the school department's budget at. I think the last several years, we've had some curveballs at the last minute, and then, and maybe not even some support on some side, but letting the budget go through to see if it would go to voters. I think if we could all get on the same page, at least to try to figure out where we would like the schools to be, so there isn't any surprises. We've tried to maximize all of our variances of what-ifs, to, you know, as far as the special ed, I made sure that this special ed TA does not happen again next year, and from what I have in there, according to them, I'm about $20,000 surplus, which I would say that's accurate budgeting. So I think, taking all of our, our ideas and putting it together, and following some of the budgets so you guys are informed. I know you, a lot of the times, the council feels like they're a rubber stamp, because it's just, you know, you're not involved in it every time, but asking the questions ahead of time, ask me, ask Dom, talk to, talk to us. I'll give you, provide any information we possibly can ahead of time, that way you guys can make the accurate decisions going forward.
Thank you. I'd like to invite School Board Member Vice Chair, Steve Shyman, to speak.
I just want to address what Counselor Johnston said, because to understand how that happened with regard to that amounts to a $500,000 miscalculation, what it comes down to. And, and you are quite correct, the initial thing that we got was that we could get a million dollars. However, we were warned as a board, that's very unlikely. So if you want to put the blame on something, I'll take the blame in the members of the board. We were aggressive about the way we did that, and it was wrong. I mean, I, I can't say any other thing, but to say that they just gave us the wrong thing is not correct, because we were aggressive about a lot of things in that budget. There were a lot of new things in that budget, we were, we went and we added a lot of RADS in there, as you recall. Some of us weren't for them, some were not, but that's the way it worked out. So, it isn't a simple situation that we were presented with the wrong figures. I do think it was difficult for them to do this, because it's a new year, it's a new program that is difficult to calculate. So we, as a board, said, hey, let's just take the optimistic side of it. I think it was a mistake personally, and I'll take, wrap for my end of the thing, but, and I think we've got to do a better job on that in the future, but I'm not trying to pass the buck on that, I'm simply saying, we made a mistake on that. But there is revenue coming in, it's coming in now, and I believe the revenues are going to turn out to be, from what I understand, around the $500,000 figure. And next year, we have a better, much better notion of being more precise.
Thank you, Steve.
I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Dom, Jason, anything further? I'd like to move on to the city side of the, the budget presentation.
I just think if we, as we go through our budget process and we give you our budget, not having what happened last year would be great, if we can get communication. I was also confused tonight, because I thought, in why we have in the charter is that we'd have the school board up here with you all, so we all can work as a team, and this is more like an update, but I think it'd be better to have, sitting around a table with the school board, because they're making the decisions, not us. I mean, it's their budget now, so just an FYI.
And they'll have that budget on Wednesday, right? They'll start the process of going through.
They have the budget now, and then they will start the discussion on Wednesday, and public, public vote, public, public hearing is the following Wednesday, and then they vote, and then it goes to the city.
So we'll get a joint city-school board meeting set up for March to, to discuss both budgets as they've been presented to the boards.
That way they can communicate back and forth.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming and, and that budget update. At the time, I'd like to invite up Glennis Salas, the Finance Director for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a reminder for the city council, since we're just discussing it, the superintendent and the school finance director will be presenting the final school board's budget to you as a body on March 23rd, and we have allocated Wednesday, April 29th, as a joint city council and school board workshop night, and that would probably be the ideal time to present any changes, cuts, or increases that you would like to perhaps see in the school budget, so that Dominic and Jason have some time to prepare what that might look like for you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, for the city's budget, overall, coming into January, the city has actually spent down 2.3 million off of unassigned fund balance, as expenses have continued to roll in between tax due dates. Now, to be clear, this isn't a permanent expenditure off of unassigned fund balance. Once we receive the second round of taxes, which are due March 13th, we should see operating income return to a positive number. However, this does demonstrate the importance of a healthy fund balance, because in the space between tax due dates, we can spend as much as 2.3 million dollars off of our unassigned fund balance to keep the books rolling. Overall expenses are tracking a touch behind, 3% behind forecast, while revenues are tracking a bit ahead, 3% ahead of forecast. Going through the departments, the assessors department is about 13% behind forecast. Bidafert is waiting on first-half salary and benefits information for our listing agent, so that they can then bill the city's portion of the shared assessors' cost. The capital program is tracking 2% ahead of forecast. We have forecasted leasing a little bit too low year-to-date, so I've adjusted that forecast based on our actual lease due dates, and it should be in line for next month's budget update. Code enforcement is tracking 6% ahead of forecast. The transfer of funds for the life safety violations rad occurred as a lump sum in January, but was projected flat through the year. The department should not be overspent by the end of the year. Council is tracking 22% behind forecast. There was a pretty significant supplies line to assist council in various supplies needed throughout the year, and it's just running a little bit behind. The fire and ambulance department is running 3% ahead of forecast. This is related to the unbudgeted holiday hours, and we have made sure that holiday time is budgeted properly for fiscal year 2021. Human resources is running 23% behind forecast. Paychecks fees are being liquidated against an encumbrance from the prior fiscal year in the IT budget. Those fees should start to hit the HR software line in April. We are also working on a plan for centralized training to use the remainder of the training budget that was encumbered previously. Information technology is running 20% behind forecast. There was $30,000 allocated as a one-time use of fund balance for a study of security threats, which is now being handled in-house. The remaining underspend is due to software licenses. I've budgeted all software licenses to be paid upfront, however, some of these licenses trickle in throughout the year. IT shouldn't be quite this underspent at the end of the year. Parks and Recreation is running 2% ahead of forecast. Program participation is up, up, up across the board. Ryan Summer and his team have been doing a great job getting members of the community to participate. Of course, this drives the need for more supplies. The $30,000 overspend is more than offset by a surplus of $78,000 on the revenue side. Planning and Economic Development is running 32% behind forecast. The department is working on utilizing funds over the next couple of weeks, now that much of the zoning ordinance revision is behind them. A portion of the funds is going to be reserved to cover the cost of the comprehensive plan update, which we're estimating at about 150,000, and that will need to happen in fiscal year 2021. The department is also set to launch an impact fee study and a market analysis before the end of the fiscal year. The solicitor is 47% ahead of forecast. At this point in time, there's only $17,000 remaining for this department to carry us through the rest of the year. There is some funding remaining contingency, which is where the bills will be paid out of once this line is fully spent. We are looking to build a plan to better manage costs in fiscal year 2021, keeping better track of what requests are coming into the solicitor department to make sure we stay in line. Supported entities are 3% ahead of forecast. The Dyer Library received two payments in July and is therefore tracking ahead, however, the difference will be made up at year's end. Building rentals revenue is running 24% ahead of forecast. Our accounts receivable clerk, Jen Maynard, has done an outstanding job getting all of our lease agreements in order and tracking them, so we are now properly billing our renters to ensure timely receipt of payment, and we are working with a few renters to collect payment that's still due. Code enforcement revenue, also 29% ahead of forecast. New construction activity continues to run hot in our strong economy. The $96,072 in incremental revenue easily covers the cost of the new cars that were purchased, minimizing impact to unassigned fund balance, which is great, again, for our bond rating. Interest earnings revenue, 72% ahead of forecast. Interest rates on our repurchase agreement continue at a very strong 2.06%, and fund balance has been quite strong, even through the time between tax bills. Planning and Economic Development revenue is $25,000 above the full-year budget, so we have met and surpassed our full-year forecast for revenues. Much work has been done between the Finance Department and Planning and Economic Development to clean up how we're collecting revenue and tracking payments from developers, and the city is starting to see the benefits of that work. Additionally, our site inspector continues to bring in revenue. Police Department revenues are 9% behind forecast, so despite the fact that we budgeted police outside assignment revenues 27,000 too high, there's strong performance in other fees and fines, bringing this line closer to target. And finally, state revenues are 21% ahead of forecast. State revenue sharing and homestead exemptions are both running 26% ahead of forecast. State revenue sharing was approved at a higher rate than what the city had budgeted. We will look to enter a stronger forecast in fiscal year 2021. So that's the general fund update, but I also wanted to go through some of the RADS that the city council had approved as part of the last year's budget process, were a little over halfway through the year, so it's a good time to check in with our departments and see what's been going on with those RADS that council deliberated so hard on at the end of last year. So, for capital projects, a rad was approved for garage fabrication equipment and a wash bay for the Public Works building. The ironworker was put into production last week and has already cut fabrication time way down. Over time, it should lower consumable and contracted services line items. As for the wash bay, it should help with the rust and corrosion issues that we have with our fleet. Rest and corrosion issues are 30% of the work of the Public Works Department. City administration, there was an approval to shift the grants and project specialist position to a communications coordinator. The City of Saco expanded its communications department in 2019, bringing onboard a communications coordinator, the background in photo and video journalism. Through this, we've been able to create visuals to enhance our ability to reach citizens with relevant information, increase digital participation in public meetings, and have deepened community members' understanding of happenings in our city. Since the addition of the coordinator, we have seen an incredible increase in reach and engagement on social platforms, which is one of our primary vehicles for sharing information with our citizens. As a department of two, communications is responsible for managing the city's social media, media relations, website, recruiting efforts, email newsletters, parking van notifications, marketing and branding, photography, videography, public information, and the shared education and government local channel. Phew, that's a lot of work for two people, so we really appreciate what they've been bringing to the table this year. Zoning ordinance revision, the, this rad has not been expended yet, as the zoning ordinance has not been finalized. We're anticipating that for late June. We will plan to spend that money out of chest as budgeted. Temporary election help, this was a rad for additional temporary staff to conduct absentee voting for the November 2019 election, so that we could keep the assistant clerk in the office to assist with counter-traffic. This has worked out great, and the money has been expended. Life safety violations elimination, the fund has been created and migrated into a non-lapsing special revenue fund on the city's books. The code enforcement department has already made use of this fund to eliminate a malfunctioning subsurface wastewater disposal system. The funds will be repaid into the account by a state grant that the department was able to secure. We also have one or two buildings that will need to be demolished and can be funded by this account in the coming year. Making the second code enforcement officer full-time. As I stated previously, the code enforcement revenues are up quite strong, and a part of that has to do with making this position full-time for the City of Saco. The code enforcement officer has been able to launch the multifamily housing inspection program. To date, inspections have been performed on 115 units, and we have about 90% of units registered. Registration is yearly, and the inspections have been broken down into a five-year cycle. Senior tax relief program. The rad that was approved was for funding the senior tax relief program at minimum wage, as well as a tax assistant match program, which was budgeted for 20 participants at $500 each. However, the senior tax assistant match program will not launch until September of 2021, so this line item will probably be underspent by the end of the year. Increasing the internal auditor hours. The internal auditor was a key resource over the summer while the finance director was out on leave. She assisted HR, Public Works Administration, and many other departments with troubleshooting problems that came up, while simultaneously keeping snail mail tracked and filed, something I certainly appreciated upon my return. So far, internal auditor has identified savings and new revenue totaling $571,147 in the general fund, and $98,257 on the other funds. This represents an ROI of 5,312% on the approved rad. Fire and ambulance, increased stipends for call division firefighters. The stipend pay rates for training and response on box alarms were implemented July 1, 2019. Fire and ambulance also increased head count to bring shift staffing to nine on all four shifts. Four new fire EMS providers joined our team in July of 2019, bringing crew staffing up to nine per crew, while maintaining a, while maintaining a minimum seven-person shift staffing. Reducing the ambulance transfer so we could replace ambulance three. Using the Houston-Galveston area council procurement program, we have received three proposals from pre-approved ambulance manufacturing sales associates. On January 30th, 2020, a contract was signed with specialty vehicles to deliver a 2010 Ford Type III ambulance, contract pricing 204,000, which does not include the patient loading system supplied by ProCare at $40,000. Total project cost 259,000, as compared to a budget estimate of 250,000. Of course, this vehicle is being leased, so we're looking at annual payment of about 60,000 per year. Information technology fully deployed their rad for a Sofos Intercept XNEDR software as of November 2020. as of November 2019, which has helped us identify and mitigate seven security incidences so far. Additionally, Information Technology implemented End Discovery. This product is now named Tyler Detect, also owned by Tyler Systems, the programmer of our Munus ERP. Software was implemented in July of 2019. Additionally, the IT department has partnered with Department of Homeland Security in using their Albert platform to do secondary real-time monitoring of internet connections and website Speaking of security threats, the threat study. Before spending $30,000 and time, the IT director went on a deep dive to find free resources to identify protections to put in place before going to a consultant. He has identified CIS controls, Tyler Detect, Department of Homeland Security, and a total of 171 other items to complete and secure the city of Saco network. At this time, the IT director does not see a need to expend the funds allocated, so it will return to the unassigned fund balance at the end of the year. The Parks and Recreation Forest U-Bracket Truck was purchased and has been in the fleet since the first of the year. The department has already put over 80 hours on the truck removing trees for maintenance and for emergency during the ice storm. This vehicle has been a time and money saver for the department. Parks and Rec has also purchased their airifier in the summer of 2019 and put it to use at the Young School Field, SMS Fields, Sandy Brook Fields, as well as Memorial Field. It will be used in the spring and fall to help with soil, as well as allowing our fields to grow. The police department did a patrol PC upgrade. The equipment has been purchased, but PD had to order separate antennas, and then all equipment will need to go to the installer, which is taking some time. And finally, our Public Works Solid Waste Curbside Collection program. The Public Works is looking to hire interns to execute this program for summer 2020 and will encumber the funds before the end of the year. That's everything I have.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Are there any questions for Finance Director Salas? Counselor Copeland.
Thank you so much for your hard work on that and that presentation. I have a question about the building rental revenue. You said it's up 24%, but I'm sorry that I don't recall what the expectation was and what the final result is.
So the full year approved budget for the total code enforcement revenues was $572,136.
Wait, code enforcement? I'm talking about building rental. Is that in code enforcement?
That's included, yep, that's code enforcement.
All right, so the building rental is...
Oh, I'm sorry, building rentals. That was budgeted at $50,000 for the year.
And it came in 24% higher?
Yeah, so we're tracking ahead 24%. So far, we've taken in $36,000, or we've billed for $36,125.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 10, administrative update. City Administrator Kainerth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few brief items. First, I'd like to recognize our city court, Michelle Hughes, who has earned the designation of Master Municipal Clerk, which is awarded by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. This organization grants the MMC designation only to those municipal clerks who have completed demanding education requirements and who have a record of significant contributions to their local government, community, and state. So congratulations to Michelle, we're very proud of her. A brief update on Camp Ellis. Mayor Doyle and I recently had a meeting with representatives from our congressional offices to discuss the proposed Camp Ellis project with the Army Corps of Engineers in an effort to restart dialogue and discussion with the Corps, and we have requested an in-person meeting that will be coming up in the coming weeks. And also just the thanks again to our legislative delegation and those from Maine DEP who came down today and participated in the session we had this morning. We had a joint Bidaford-Saco meeting on February 13th. That was Mayor Doyle, myself, Counselor Archer, and Counselor Purdy. We hosted the meeting here, and we had in attendance Bidaford's mayor, city manager, and two of their counselors to discuss potential joint efforts, partnerships, and ways we can work collaboratively. Our agenda items include our shared assessing contract, an update on the Camp Ellis situation, a possible regional communication center, and a discussion of other potential part-time positions that both cities have that could maybe be shared between the two cities. So the group plans to meet again in April to continue these discussions. Our market analysis RFP, we received a healthy response of nine proposals to our RFP. A staff committee closely examined the proposals using an evaluation matrix and narrowed the field down to three firms. We conducted those interviews over the past week with the three, and we'll now select one and offer a contract to the final selection. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the city administrator? Seeing none, moving on to agenda item 11, council discussion in common. Any council discussion in common? Counselor McPhail.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I received an email letter from a constituent who was not able to be here for the public comment earlier, and she was hoping that I would be able to read it. My name is Ripley Briggs. I live at 92 Middle Street in Saco. I am writing to you in support of Saco Main Street. Throughout my childhood, I have always admired my dad. No matter what project he was working on, you know he was going to put his whole heart into the project. If it is building me a scooter for my kindergarten talent show portraying the American Girl doll kit, to renovating houses after he lost his corporate job, and finally, to all of Saco Main Street events, my father is one of the most devoted individuals I have ever met. Even on those late nights for meetings or early mornings getting ready from an event, I have always been ready and willing to drop everything to help him get through the day. With this additional funding, my dad will be able to take a breather and take some time for himself and his family, which he so deserves. Thank you so much for your time and your consideration, and hopefully, my father will be more able, more relaxed and able to vacation this coming year. Thank you, Ripley Briggs.
Thank you. Any further comment from council discussion?
And as most of you know, Ripley is a dedicated, I mean, just as much as Rob. She volunteers at every event that she can. Unfortunately, she is up in college at Farmington right now, and she has, she herself has been an asset to the organization.
Thank you very much. I have three things I would like to remind folks about the census and the opportunities to be a census taker and make up to $20 an hour. Also, I would like to let everyone know that there are plenty of boards and committees that are looking for folks to join. Please feel free to apply online through the Saco City website, and we'll get you moving through the process. And then third, meet the mayor, public hours will be March 7th. I believe that's Saturday, March 7th, at the Saco Scoop, from 9:00 to 11:00. So March 7th, 9:00 to 11:00 in Saco's Scoop. Any further council discussion in common? Moving on to executive session, is there a motion to be read and moved?
Be it ordered, the city council enter into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405.6E, update from the city solicitor on toddle-in property.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Menthorne, second by Counselor Gunn. Any discussion? Seeing none. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorne?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
It's Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. We are now entering executive session. Three-minute break in between, but we'll be meeting in the city administrators' conference Can I have a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
It's been a motion to come out of executive session by Counselor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
A second's been made by Counselor Menthorne. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorne?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston. We are now out of executive session at 9:57. Is there a report from executive session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there is.
Counselor Menthorne?
Make a motion subject to the final revisions that will be reviewed and approved by the city administrator and which additional revisions will not materially affect or alter the terms of the settlement as discussed by council and subject to code enforcement office granting a new occupancy permit authorizing the use of Five Willy Road as a public-private school and subject to review by the city planner of conditions imposed by the site plan permit for Five Willy Road to herein authorize the city administrator to execute the settlement agreement and any related documents to effectuate the settlement provided the other parties, Saco Schools, toddle-in, also agree to execute the settlement agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Menthorne, second by Counselor Gunn. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call, vote. Counselor Archer?
Reluctantly, yes.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorne?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Absolutely no.
Motion passes 6-0. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Six-one.
Six-one, excuse me.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion's been made, and second hand vote, all in favor? It's unanimous, we are adjourned at 10 o'clock.